Good afternoon, trustees and members of the community. We appreciate the opportunity to do as we've done every month during this COVID time and really almost every week to update our community. Today, we are bringing forward a recommendation for our next steps in the community. Trustees, there are three parts to this superintendent update and recommendation. The first part are some brief opening remarks. Then Ms. Bacalor will join us to review the CDC guidelines. We know that we have received new CDC guidelines on February 12th, and we've been working with those and wanted to brief you on those. And then thirdly, I'll be offering a superintendent recommendation, and we'll look forward to your discussion. I know that we plan this meeting so that we could get this information to our community just as quickly as possible. There were unfolding developments as late as yesterday afternoon that impacted this particular recommendation. So we've been working and are very pleased to be able to bring forward more clarity today. We've come a long way through this COVID journey, through this global pandemic, and we, as we approach really the year-long mark in this crisis, we all understand, our staff, our students, our parents, our board and in our community, we understand the significant need to have our students and staff, our students and families, have that option of return to in-school learning. I want to point out that the Ann Arbor Public Schools team has invested thousands of hours over the previous months in a good faith effort to find our plan forward for students and staff to safely return to the classroom. The question has always been a matter of when we would return, not if. We recognize that this time has presented significant challenges for everyone. Our children need in-school learning opportunities. Our staff and parents who've worked so valiantly at kitchen tables across this community, and everyone has made so many sacrifices. And at this time, we need to provide the option for in-school learning. Our community needs this next step. We look forward to that day when we can welcome our students back to in-school learning, and we're going to share more about that over the coming minutes. However, I want to pause just for a moment and reflect on something that you all have been thinking about a lot on the board and on our team and in the community. As we cross, just in the previous day, the milestone of 500,000 individuals lost in our country to this pandemic. We also understand the significant pain many in our community and across our country have suffered. And we know that each person's experience is unique, and we don't suppose to understand everyone's experience on that. But we do recognize that while we are all part of this human and family loss, the pandemic has been experienced very differently by some individuals and families, those who have personally lost family members. And this pandemic has inordinately impacted Black and Brown students and families, those impacted by poverty, and those without adequate access to quality health care. It was recently reported in the New York Times, and I'll put this link in the written update so that everyone has it. It was recently reported that 69% of reported cases of the multi-system inflammatory syndrome in children have impacted Latino or Black young people, which experts believe stems from socioeconomic and other factors that have disproportionately exposed communities to the virus. As an urban, majority-diverse district, and as human beings, we have our eye on that situation, and we have all along. So I want to pause at the beginning of this update, trustees, to share that we will open this recommendation with our stated and firm commitment to establish a process with clear action steps to bring a plan forward over the near and coming days to ensure that across our student, our staff, our parent and family community, that we continue to engage in conversation to ensure that equity remains the heartbeat of a reopening process. This reopening process will include all voices, and it is our responsibility to establish and share with our community a set of action steps to continue this conversation, to ensure that we see, we listen, we hear, and we live our value of equity during this return alongside all those who are impacted differently than we may have been. We have a responsibility, as we've stated from the beginning, to maintain the priority of health and safety for our students, staff, and community. As we move through these next steps and through this recommendation today, I want to clarify that that priority of health and safety that has guided us through these months will continue. It will not change now. We hear and understand that our children and our families follow along a wide continuum of preferences, of needs in their family situations when it comes to COVID and returning to school. COVID school is certainly not a one-size-fits-all, and this is the lesson we must remember. As we shared back on January 13th, and prior to that in the New Year's superintendent's update, we have set our direction to transition to offer an in-school hybrid learning option for all students and families who choose this option. It is important to note that, as we have promised from the beginning, we will also continue to offer virtual learning for those families that prefer to continue learning virtually. As we said from last summer, this will be a dial and the turning of the dial through the COVID year. We know that a number of our families are ready to turn that dial to an in-school hybrid learning opportunity. We also know that for others, they will choose to remain on their prior setting on the dial. We respect and understand and are committed to meet the needs of all of our families along that spectrum. Two key and critical components to our moving forward. We've talked about these trustees week after week since last summer. Two key and critical components have been vaccinations for our staff. Certainly, back in the summer and fall, we did not understand that we would have vaccinations readily available or coming and prioritized for our staff. But certainly, now that these are available, you all have shared, trustees, as have I, our commitment to expedite teacher vaccinations. We want to thank all of those who've been involved at the federal, at the state, and at the local level. Members of this board and I have been very closely connected to decision-makers across the spectrum of getting and acquiring an expedited vaccine process for our school personnel. And as of yesterday, we understand that we will be able, and certainly it's not ours to host. It is Washtenaw County Health Department who oversees the vaccination process. But we do understand that vaccinations will be forthcoming beginning this Saturday for teachers and personnel, all school staff and personnel who are related and connected to stage one of our in-school hybrid learning option. Secondly, we've been noting in our regular updates for many months the need for testing in our schools. This is critically important as an extra layer of protection and of confidence for our parents and for our students and for our staff. We are delighted that just in the last three days, we've received commitment that we will be able to offer in-school rapid testing for our students. That was the addition that we achieved recently. Prior to that, we knew we would be able to offer that for our staff. At this time, trustees, I know that we've had a lot of questions about the CDC recently released CDC guidelines. We want to take just a few moments, very briefly, to review those. Trustees, back in September, you approved a set of metrics. Those metrics served us for the opening weeks of the year. Along about November, December, trustees, we expanded that list of other considerations. And you remember that we noted that list in all of our updates along that timeframe during the surge, November, December, January surge. Now, here, as of February 12th, we have received a new set of guidance from CDC. Trustees, I know we take this in tandem with everything that we have to consider, and yet we wanted to share with you today how our current data aligns with the CDC guidelines, and also how our six mitigation strategies for keeping our students and staff safe and healthy in our schools, how that aligns with the recently updated CDC guidance. This will be a very brief portion, and then we will come back for a recommendation and move directly into the trustees' discussion of the recommendation. And with that, Ms. Bacalor is coming to share the CDC update. Ms. Bacalor.
Thank you. Good afternoon, trustees and Dr. Swift. Let's go to the second slide. As Dr. Swift has mentioned, on February 12th, the Centers for Disease Control released new guidance, which we have been eagerly awaiting for quite some time. And this new guidance does some different things for us than the previous guidance did. First, it provides new indicators and thresholds for community transmission of COVID-19. It replaces what we had used in the fall to guide the development of our metrics. It also ties the community spread data directly with school operations guidance. I'm pleased to see that this new guidance includes testing and a kind of repackaging of a lot of the same mitigation strategies that we knew about. It also adds vaccination as an additional layer of protection. I wanted to share some more detail about these new indicators and thresholds for you and for the community. They've relooked at how to gauge community spread, and this has been a bit of a confusing move. And in fact, The Bridge Magazine last week retracted an article which they had based on their interpretation of this and then published a different article. So what the CDC is looking at now is the total new cases per 100,000 persons in the past seven days. That's different from the average, the seven-day average. So it would be easy to misinterpret this chart based on that. They're also using a term N A A T S, which stands for nucleic acid amplification tests, which is basically the PCR test that we've been talking about this whole time. So it can look a little different when you're looking at it. So they have also set new thresholds for their color system ranging from low to high with blue to red. So I'm going to start this slide on the left-hand side and work you through how Washtenaw County looks according to this new way of looking at our data. And this is directly from the CDC website, which I have linked down below. So as of Sunday, February 21st, we had a 106.09 per 100K seven-day total average, which puts us in the high risk for the CDC threshold. Our percent positivity is really good. We're down to 1.8 there. That's awesome. That's low transmission blue. And I think it's a little bit of a misnomer to refer to positivity as transmission. It's a different type of metric in a way, but it doesn't matter. We're looking really good in that one. All right, so this also is all available on the website. But now we can take our information about the CDC thresholds and Washtenaw County data and apply it to the tables that the CDC has about operating schools. So this is their recommended implementation of mitigation strategies and how to run schools table, too. So what they say is across all transmission levels, there should be their five mitigation measures, which I'm going to talk about in a minute, including the universal and correct use of masks, for example. They've also added diagnostic testing across all transmission levels. So I am very, very thankful that we just this week received the permission to do diagnostic testing. In addition, it talks about operating schools in hybrid learning, which matches perfectly with our hybrid plan for elementary stages one to three. And that means it says elementary schools in hybrid learning mode or reduced attendance. It also says physical distancing of six feet or more is required, which we are striving to do through our hybrid system. And then below that, on the right-hand side, it talks about middle schools and high schools. And the information here lines up with our hybrid plan secondary stage number four. All right, so we've already been working really hard on our mitigation measures and have done tons of stuff. And I want to give a shout out to the principals and teachers and union partners and everybody who has really worked on these mitigation protocols over the past several weeks. So when the CDC five key mitigation strategies came out as part of their February 12th guidance, of course, I wanted to see how well do we match up with those with our APS Super Six. And so the CDC five key mitigation strategies are listed on the left side of your screen. And our protocols and strategies are on the right side. And I won't go point by point because you can read the slide. But basically, we are covering everything from the CDC and then some. And they have cohorting and ventilation tucked up under other mitigation strategies as well. But we've called those two things out as very important.
Thank you for that update on the CDC guidance. I know that we've been working on that. We wanted to set it out for our community to be aware of it. At this time, trustees, I would like to articulate the recommendation that I'm bringing forward to you today. You can see as a result of progress with vaccinations for our school personnel. And I want to clarify that along this path, it would be contingent upon full vaccination process, meaning that every staff member has had the invitation and the opportunity to be vaccinated. You can see with the progress toward vaccinations, toward in-school testing, and with our continued declining rates, I am able to bring forward today a recommendation to add the hybrid in-school learning option. This would include the stages as we've articulated them in the past. There is no change on this. But so that our community is clear, I'll ask Ms. Osinski to post that slide as a reminder to everyone of how this proposal is laying out. Ms. Osinski, thank you. Stage one targeted to begin March 25th and 26th. That would be one day each for each of the cohorts. That would include preschool, Wi-Fi, and kender for those families who choose the hybrid learning option. That would include students with high-level specialized learning needs, self-contained classrooms at all levels, elementary, middle, and high school. It would also include the beginning of a phased process with some small groups of students at secondary. Stage two, the following week of school, falling spring break, would be for first and second grade of those students and families who choose the hybrid in-school learning model. April 12th would be for grades third through fifth. Again, those who choose the hybrid in-school learning model. And then beginning at April 12th would be also the phased process with secondary. I do want to note that the week of April 12th is that national PSAT SAT week that we do not have input on. That is the week of those tests. So our principals would follow through with more about the district's schedule on secondary. This addition, this recommendation of the in-school hybrid option provides a full quarter of the school year with the opportunity for every student and family who chooses to participate in hybrid learning. This spring experience will lay a strong foundation in this COVID year for a full and robust summer program in fall of 2021. I do want to point to fall 2021. This is the same statement that I shared last week, but it bears repeating because this question is coming up frequently in our community. Understandably, we look forward to summer, spring, and summer and fall. And while we all recognize that COVID will remain with us through this time, I want to share that, given what we know today, we are intent on a robust summer learning program that will be detailed right away during March, as it is coming to fruition. And I also want to declare our intent on a full return to school in the Ann Arbor Public Schools this fall, a full five days per week of instruction for students and staff. And certainly, if there is any unforeseen event that would change that ability, we would be the first ones to immediately be in communication with our trustees and with our community on any change. But that is our intention. Our intention is as strong as any other district, any other education provider for a strong and robust 21, 22 school year. We will also, because I know there are parents who are listening for this, we will also offer as a separate delivery for 21, 22, the opportunity for students and parents to choose a virtual delivery. And we will talk more about that over the coming weeks. We look forward to a robust time of a return to school, and we know that our work together this spring and summer and fall will lay a strong foundation for moving forward. We will move forward with elementary community sessions if the board considers and moves forward with this recommendation today. The community sessions at schools will commence, and our survey, both for the choice of learning program and separately for transportation, those surveys will move forward by the end of this week. I want to share just a last remark, and then we will give it to the trustees, President Johnson, for your discussion. We will continue in the Ann Arbor Public Schools to carry forward the critical mission of serving our students and our families with a quality educational experience. During this time, we are committed to our core value of teaching and learning and offering the finest educational experience anywhere. Our teachers and staff are among the best in the world. Our programs are top shelf, and we are excited to continue that offering. We are heartbroken at the divisiveness in the community. We understand that folks have many, many concerns. Our families are expressing fear of losing their school community, and we understand that, and we are saddened. And yet, we are deeply committed to working with our parents and our students and our staff and our community to reestablish trust and confidence in our schools. And I am asking today for everyone in our community to join together for the sake of our children. It is time for us to come together. It's time to place our full energies, not to go to criticism or conspiracy accusations, but rather place our full commitment, our North Star to children. These are our community schools. These are our children in Ann Arbor. We have a long history of community partnership, and we understand that there is healing and restoration that our children need, our community needs at this time, and we are committed to that process. These Ann Arbor Public Schools, in these Ann Arbor Public Schools and in our community, our success and our failure are tied together. And we know that by working together, we will deploy the innovation and the partnership and the connection and the care that we've had in the past. And that will be our North Star in our work moving forward. So with that, trustees, we are at 12:30. I know that you all will have questions and discussion. And I know President Johnson that you're moving toward a vote. So with that, we are prepared. My team will take notes and move forward as needed.
Thank you, Dr. Swift. I see Trustee Baskett. Trustee Baskett.
Thank you, trustees, Mr. Johnson. Dr. Swift, I'm fully satisfied that you have met the directive as we moved last week. Therefore, I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation as presented.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to accept the recommendation. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, seconded by Trustee Kelly. Discussion. Trustee Cariero.
Yeah, thank you, President Johnson. I just want to make a statement that I prepared to say, and then we can continue on with our discussion. Today, I will abstain from voting on any part of this afternoon's meeting. Yesterday, in a meeting with Dr. Swift and Trustee Gainer, I asked openly if it was within the board's right to change today's meeting time. I left the meeting with the impression that it was. Then early this morning, I received an email regarding the time change from a concerned citizen who pointed out that we might be in violation of Code 1200, which is titled "The Meeting Type and Notice" in Section 1,000 of our bylaws. I reached out to David Combsa, our attorney, this morning to see if we were indeed in violation of our bylaws. I have not yet connected with him to see if we are. But after reading the code carefully several times, I do believe that we are. This morning, I informed other trustees of my concerns and my intention to abstain. And it was pointed out to me that by abstaining, I might be in violation of Code 1250 myself, which states that, and I'll quote, "Board members are expected to vote in all matters that come before the board, except where abstention is required by law because of a conflict of interest or is necessary for other just cause. Board members who abstain from a vote shall be required to declare the reason for their abstention." I don't believe that I am in violation of this particular code, and I've now stated the reason why. Please don't read my abstination of these votes as an unwillingness or a hesitation to vote. I'm happy to cast my vote tonight, as it is my obligation to do so after the public condemnatory is read. Thanks so much for your time, everybody.
Thank you, Trustee Cariero. Trustee Kelly.
Thank you. While I disagree with Trustee Cariero's interpretation of 1250, I will leave that up to the meeting chair or perhaps our attorney to address. I had asked, first of all, this is a big step today. I'm really excited to even be considering this. This is something that I think everyone's just been, you know, holding on to for a long time. And I had asked Dr. Swift as we were seeing this recommendation come together about the about the equity question, you know, Ann Arbor is distinct from many of our neighbors and our diversity. And as Dr. Swift noted, um, underserved communities have experienced disproportionate rates of mortality and morbidity related to COVID. So I had asked upfront about what she would be able to tell us about ensuring that when we open our buildings for anyone, that we'll be opening them in ways that are low risk for everyone. And I appreciate very much that Dr. Swift led her presentation with the recognition of, of that concern. And, um, it has been, uh, very clear that we are going to have a process to ensure that, um, the action steps are in place to, to make sure that it's a safe opening for, for everyone in our community. So I wanted to highlight that and express my appreciation for that. Um, I also wanted to, um, highlight that people will have really specific questions about what this means for their family. And that information doesn't come from the board meeting. It comes from your school. Just like your principal reaches out in August to talk about how school looks at your school. That's the, uh, channel that people can expect their information to come from. Um, this time around, what it looks like, um, for families. And those information sessions, the one question I have is, um, how information will come to our families who have children in special education? Um, obviously all families are invited to the information session, but when there is the information specific, the details that are specific and individualized to students, how can, um, families expect to receive that information?
Thank you for that question, uh, trustee Kelly. Uh, we will share information as we normally do in the same manner that we normally do. And I would point to in a particular, um, from the teacher or case manager or principal, um, directly about or special, uh, needs provider, however that normally comes, it will come over these coming weeks as, as we prepare. I am receiving a message that folks may not have heard me, uh, correctly. Uh, this, uh, proposal is for the hybrid in-school learning opportunity for those children and families who choose. As you recall, trustees, that is a Monday, Tuesday in-school for one cohort and a Thursday, Friday in-school for the other cohort. That allows us to achieve the six feet, uh, that Ms. Bakalor pointed to on the CDC guidelines. So this is the same plan that we have been sharing consistently, um, over these previous months. Thank you.
Thank you for that additional clarification and, and, um, information on channels of communication. Um, I'm excited to support this proposal, so, um, I will, uh, yield the floor to, to additional trustee question. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Kelly. Um, trustee Gaynor.
Thank you. Um, I want to, um, thank the 740 people who are listening in to the 13 of us on, on the panel. I know there's, obviously there's been great interest. I have been working hard to read and reply to, oh, I don't know, four or 500 emails in, since our last meeting. I know trustee Baskett's secretary has been doing so as well. And perhaps other trustees, although they've just been overwhelming, but they're important. And I'm mentioning this because I do want to say that we have, we value and, um, take in all of the input we receive. I also just want to make a quick word about last week's meeting. Um, it, it all came up suddenly and, and perhaps that conversation could have been done several weeks earlier. Um, and I, I'm sorry for the tumult it, it created in the community, but I don't apologize for the conversation, for the considering of options, um, in public view. I've always held for transparency and openness. And it's not always pretty, um, but we saw it last week. I, I wanted to ensure last week that the vote wasn't taken at the moment and it did get postponed and it did allow us to get more information and more input. Um, so I'm glad at the point we are today. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Dupree.
Hi, so I just had a few questions. I'll try to be quick because I understand that a lot of us are on our lunch hour, so we gotta be like super fast. Um, for those who are going to stay virtual, are we still going to provide the food services and hotspots and things like that that we have been providing to meet some of these social concerns? Are we still going to be providing those things, uh, during the hybrid learning?
There is, thank you trustee Dupree, there is no diminishment of any of the program that we have been offering. What we are doing is scaling up a second program. So, uh, on the food, as we've shared, we'll continue with the distribution, but also have the cafeteria, the in-school food option as well. And that is true with all of the details of this spring quarter. Thank you for that good question.
Okay, that's the only question. Trustee Lazarus.
Thank you, Dr. Swift, for this, uh, recommendation. And I'm, and I also want to thank all the, uh, powers that be in our community and at the state level and our board members specifically and Dr. Swift for bringing these game-changing, um, resources to our community to keep our, uh, staff and children safe. It's very important that, um, this is what we've been looking for for months. This is what we've really been asking for. And I am ecstatic, ecstatic that it is finally here and I'm ready to move forward. I do apologize for the, I regret and apologize for the, you know, confusion that our conversation in Wednesday actually provided in our community. I truly believe that we are all on the same side. We're all here to service every single child in our community to give them the best education that we possibly can going forward. Um, I'd like to also mention that this is a game changer that we will be able to provide options for families. So we aren't getting rid of the virtual for families that choose that. We are giving the option to do in-person hybrid mode. And we are keeping our, our staff safe. And I just am very excited about that. Um, one of the things I want to just quickly mention, and this is kind of my mind maybe a little foggy, but I remember in April of last year, we did a bull, a full board resolution to suspend our, uh, through the 1050, uh, bylaw that allows us to do that, uh, to suspend because of COVID. So it suspended, my understanding, it suspended all of our bylaws in order for us to be able to move and, um, navigate through this COVID world faster and quicker and be more responsive. I could be incorrect, but I believe I remember that happening. So if, just to respond to that. So I'm very happy to see this, uh, proposal come forward. And thank you trustee Baskett for putting it on the table for a vote. Thank you.
Okay, well, um, trustee Gaynor.
I apologize. Um, I was going to save a couple of comments for later when there were more people attending, but as we have 750 now, I'll, I'll say it now. Um, I, I know Dr. Swift said this, but I want to reinforce that the, um, aspect of this, that a return won't be dependent on all staff being, having had the opportunity to be fully immunized. And I certainly feel a good, a good faith effort that no staff will be forced back before they've had that opportunity. Um, I also want to repeat, um, my statement from last week, and I won't wear a mask to emphasize it because it was in, misinterpreted and I apologize for that. There will be, um, drawbacks to teaching and learning in this high flex mode where teachers are teaching to students and, uh, both at home and in person. Um, it's not, as a former classroom teacher from grades one through eight, I won't say it's not the classroom I am used to that I want to have that is the best possible for teaching, but it is necessary given social distancing and mask wearing. Um, I understand, um, the many valid reasons to have students in school for social and emotional reasons. Um, I fully expect we'll take every mitigation, um, strategy seriously and play them consistently. Um, but it won't be balancing off, um, the issues of having to introduce a group of students to the routines in person. This always takes a couple of weeks and they'll even have to be more attention paid to that, um, to make sure, um, things are safe. And, uh, again, it's a complex decision. I will be supporting this proposal given everything in mind. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I will, I'll make one quick comment because I want to respect the time. I know some trustees, um, have, uh, have, have commitments as well. Um, I just want to thank Dr. Swift and her team, um, thank the trustees, uh, for, for soldiering through this. This has been a long journey. Um, we, we set out, uh, some expectations almost a year ago, and I do feel confident that we, we've kept our, our promises to the community in terms of making sure that we did have a safe and successful return to school, uh, that we are investing both in our students, uh, in ways that other districts may not, but also in our teaching staff and our, and our, um, our overall staff that, you know, some other districts may not. And, um, you know, we, we have to provide a quality learning environment for our students. And part of that is having, um, teachers who are in an environment that they feel safe, uh, and, and that they, in, in, in creating a, a community where they feel like we appreciate and respect their professional, um, abilities and, and their, their, uh, their rights and, and beliefs that they, uh, should be safe by their definition, not by someone else's definition. And so I'm really excited about this. I know that it, it has been a lot of work. And I want to thank, uh, as Dr. Swift did, and as we said yesterday, thank, uh, all the, the, um, the public servants that we've worked with at all levels, uh, for this. This is, this has been really good. It's, it's better than, than I anticipated at this time, to be perfectly honest. Um, so, uh, as a community, let's just continue to, to work towards keeping, um, keeping things safe across the, the, uh, the city. Um, and, you know, we'll, you'll, we'll hear more details about what this actually looks like in implementation. But as always, we'll bring the community along with us. We are not, you know, our goal is not to shock anyone. We will tell you what we're doing. And in most cases, we, we always have done that. And so with that, I will be supporting this as well. Um, and at this point, I would like to, um, ask for a vote.
The board reconfirms the delivery of instruction provided for in the district's extended COVID-19 learning plan. Number two, that the board directs the superintendent or her designee to report to SEPI in the form and manner prescribed by SEPI, the instructional delivery method that was reconfirmed, how that instruction will be delivered for each grade level offered by the district, including pre-kindergarten as applicable, and whether or not, as determined by the department in consultation with the center, the district is offering higher levels of in-person instruction for English language learners, special education students, or other special populations. And three, that each month, the district will reconfirm how instruction is going to be delivered during the 2020, 2021 school year at a meeting of the board. And at said meeting, the district will solicit public comment from the parents and legal guardians of students enrolled in the district.
Awesome. Trustee Baskett, do you accept that amendment?
So. Yes.
All right, thank you. So amendment accepted. Um, Ms. Osinski, or Ms. Osinski, can we have a roll call?
Trustee Lazarus.
Yes.
President Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Gaynor.
Yes.
Trustee Dupree.
Yes.
Trustee Baskett.
Yes.
Trustee Kara-Harrow.
Abstained.
Trustee Kelly.
Yes.
Motion carries, six, yes, one abstention.
Thank you very much.